Recording in progress. It is now four P M on Tuesday, June third, two thousand twenty-five. I'd like to call the comprehensive plan land use work. Uh, to order. Madam Clerk, can you take the role, please?
Brenham.
Here.
Pugh.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Teresho. Weaver.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Eileen.
Here.
Mackey. English. Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next is item two, adoption of the agenda. Administrator Brown, do we have any changes to the agenda this afternoon?
No requested changes.
I entertain a motion.
Auto approved agenda.
Second.
Motion is second for approval. Madam Clerk.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Livingston. Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Eileen.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English. Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Um, we have one item this afternoon for discussion. As a reminder, this is a work session and so council will not take action this evening. But it is, uh, for the comprehensive plan and land use scenarios. Administrator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna have Director Sinithia Williams to, uh, kick us off. Uh, Madam Chair, members of council, uh, and then we'll hear from a, a third party consultant who is here all this afternoon as well.
Thank you. Director Williams, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, good evening. As you all know, we've been, uh, working the last few months on the update to the comprehensive plan. We have now entered phase two of the comprehensive plan update process, which is looking at potential land use scenarios. Uh, we spent the last month presenting these various land use scenarios to citizens at a variety of public meetings around the county. And so now we'd just like to have a more in-depth discussion with county council to present those same potential land use scenarios. Let you know the thought process behind developing those scenarios. Receive any feedback or discussion you may have or questions you may have before we come with a recommended potential land use scenario as part of phase three of the update. So today I'd like to introduce Mr. Matt Nooncaster. He's part of our consulting team. He works specifically with City Explained and he will go through, uh, a brief presentation to kind of explain that. But feel free to ask any questions you may have during the process.
Thank you so much. Estner, you're recognized.
First of all, thank you for having me this afternoon. I appreciate your time. Look forward to working with you now and in the future as we bring the comprehensive plan across the finish line. Uh, for today, I'm gonna be presenting to you sort of a snapshot of what, what we've been doing for the last six to eight weeks or so. Just to make sure you're caught up. Now, full disclosure, I can talk about this for three minutes or three days. I teach a short course on it. They told me you have a hard stop, so we're gonna go short.
This meeting is only one hour.
I know. I know. So to that end, though, I, I bring that up and the point to be made is if you have a question and it's a detailed question, just ask it. Um, I had both the privilege and the honor that I created the maps, I ran the models. I, so I, I can answer a question if you have it, but I'm not gonna get into those weeds and just, and bore you to death. So, uh, for that end, we're gonna do a, a highlight on this. So, um, every good meeting starts with an agenda so I can stay on target. So for today, I'm gonna give you a little bit of an update just where we are in the larger project, just so you know what's going on as long as I'm here and we have representation for you. Um, and then I'm gonna really focus in on what's called the Growth Choices Initiative. It's a critical part of our planning process. Um, it's where a lot of big ideas get generated and where things start to make it on paper as we're going through an idea process. So it's a really important time to check in with you. And then I'm gonna, as was mentioned, I'm gonna present to you the three scenarios and sort of what I call the director's cut. I'm gonna tell you why we did what we did, how they relate to each other, so that you have that information to provide fi- uh, feedback and give insights. I'm gonna share with you a little bit of the community feedback that we've gotten so far. It's still coming in, so we have a survey that's open. Um, but I wanna share with you kind of where things are headed. Uh, and then I'll tell you about the next steps. So we're all, all in coordination for that. So by way of project update, we'll go to the next slide. Thank, thank you. Uh, we are in what, about a ten-month process. Um, I've been doing this for decades now and the longer the process, the more people kind of tend to stray away. So we try to keep it more compact now, keep people focused. We're trying to do this in ten months with a target adoption in December of two thousand twenty-five. Now, as you all know, you control more of that than I do at the end of this process. So we're gonna bring a draft document to you, um, and help to keep you informed so you understand what you're looking at as we go through the process. That's what today is about. Um, three general phases. Uh, phase one is discovery, us learning about the community, the community learning about us, doing data analysis, community learning from each other. It's been a really good process. As, uh, was mentioned, we are in phase two right now, which is development, big ideas. We're generating big ideas. And then, as you know, nothing's controversial till you write it down. So we'll go into phase three and start to create the draft document. Um, and that's where we really start to get some good reactions from people. So next slide. So if I just drill down into phase two, uh, very quickly for you, I had four components. One was to create these alternative futures and I'm gonna go through today sort of how they were generated, what they mean and what they stand for. And then we had our, what, uh, officially is called our public forum number two, but I call it the Growth Choices Initiative. And we went out to the public, uh, in early May and are wrapping that up, um, again with our survey still open. And now we're at this idea of the vision plan. And the vision plan starts, um, today with our presentation to you and any feedback you have. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled with staff for next week. They're just trying to mash together all the comments and things we've heard. We also have a workshop coming up with Planning Commission and we'll be meeting with our advisory committee as well. So we're gonna try to make sure it's a, a big family who's working on this idea, because it's, again, it's a critical part of this. And then we'll move on to phase three. Next slide. And if we do this right, and what we've been trying to do through this whole process is get to that sweet spot so we can, it's easier to write the document. So we try to get as much community input as we can, both good and bad. We're trying to look for, for the point and the counterpoint. We have been collecting a lot of data and doing an analysis. And then when ideas are brought forward, we try to find examples where it's been done before to see what went well and what didn't go well. And where all those things, things kind of overlap is that sweet spot. If we have community support for something, the data supports it and we can show that it does work, that's where the plan gets written and it's successful. So that's kind of what our goal is here as we go through the process. And so if you're so inclined, uh, on our, um, project website or through the, the planning department, you can get a copy of what I call the Adult Book Report. This is just a collection of all the data that we could find, the analysis that we could find, other reports and plans that have been done. And we just put it all in one place as a convenient point to go to and just check ourselves and make sure the data's there that we're finding. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that we also have married that with the community engagement. We're doing both high-tech and low-tech, so things like project websites, but also just being in the same room, looking at each other eye to eye and really kind of just talking about the future of the community. Um, we've been doing things where they're, uh, in person and it's conversational. We've been doing the surveys and, and so we've really tried to come at this comprehensively to make sure we give people a lot of opportunities to participate. So if you go to our next slide, you'll see that we actually have sort of a rundown of what's been done so far. Uh, public forum one was our kind of launch out into the public to let everybody know this was going on. That was in December. Um, staff has been wonderful in following up with some town hall meetings as well as neighborhood meetings, organizational and agency meetings. Really, any invitation that comes forward, they've taken it, which has been fantastic. Um, we did participate with staff in some focus group meetings and, and led some of those meetings. There was a survey that was done, five hundred and fifty responses to that survey. There's an idea board. If you ever just have an idea on the website, you can leave and we've done an email blast from time to time. If you go to the next slide, though, is really what we're here for today, which again was public forum number two. We officially did it at the Adventure Children's Museum where the consultant team and the, uh, county staff worked together to host that event. And then after that, county staff took it on the road and did a wonderful job and just getting, getting it out more, uh, spatially and geographically out to other points of the county. Um, and so we've had five events so far, again, going over a twenty-day period from May first to the twenty-first. We've also had a survey, uh, going on in the background as well, if people can't make it to the in-person event. Next. So some of the ideas that have been just kind of generated and coming out, um, there's just a quick list here. And it's just kind of become sort of our launching pad for some of the scenarios we're gonna present to you. But this idea about sustainability, whether it's environmental or fiscal and financial, as well as equitable development. And that's not just, um, what kind of development, but where within the county it occurs. Economic vitality, bringing more jobs and prosperity, um, to unincorporated Richland County. Um, as well as environmental concerns, that could be either flooding, it could be preservation, conservation. You could even throw agriculture into there as well as in some of the history and cultural, um, assets that you have here. Accessibility, accessibility to affordable housing, accessibility to jobs, accessibility to education. And then the connectivity of how you move within the county was very important. The idea of quality of life is a, is a big banner to just say, you know, for my day-to-day activities, uh, am I satisfied living in the county? And then this idea about collaborative growth management, you'll see that in some of the scenarios about where you grow and maybe how you partner with some of the cities and towns within the county when you grow, um, to make good use of infrastructure and those kind of things. All right, so the initiative itself, if we go into the, the next slide, please. I don't wanna make this bigger than it is, but the Growth Choices Initiative was sort of a phenomenon where we took together, um, an opportunity to have engagement, an opportunity to create data and, and do analysis and to provide multiple futures that we brought back to the community. So as you could have mentioned, uh, imagine just given where you sit, uh, you'd hear opinions and sometimes you hear opposing opinions about the same idea. And that's what this was great. We actually invited that. That was awesome because we were able to show different ways the county could grow. And instead of just dismissing somebody's opinion, we let them run in these three different scenarios to get some more data to make a more informed decision. So it was really encouraging. And again, the feedback that we're getting will have direct input and have the fingerprints on the map that we bring back to you, the future land use map, will be generated from what we did for this. Thanks. And so as you can imagine, and I, uh, for those of you who experienced it, this can be overwhelming, though. It's a massive amount of information to take in. So what we did was we tried to divide it into, uh, going either like to an art exhibit or some, something else where we can put it into bite-sized pieces. And so if you went to one of the events, you saw that each of the stations sort of had a different future. You could soak it all in and then you could go to the next one. And then for those of you who didn't want to spend that much time, you could go to the side-by-side comparisons. And so these are just some of the pictures that we had from those events. They were well-attended. It was also our first opportunity at sort of the unofficial survey. We had to ask people what they liked, disliked, or questions they had about each one. And they could put a post-it note right there or put a note right there. That was our first survey, um, and before we did the online survey. But we were getting feedback instantly, uh, from the events. Also, if anybody was telling us something, we were kind of taking notes and that kind of stuff as well. Again, the survey is out, uh, right now. If you wanna go to, uh, reimagine Richland as the project website, um, you can find it. It's about a third of the way down on the right-hand side, if, if you or your constituents want to take the survey. So then ultimately, as we, if we have discussed, you won't pick one of the scenarios. Just not pick one of the three and we'll move that forward. It's let's take them apart and see what we really like about them and how they can work better, um, so we create the preferred. So that's what we'll be doing, uh, in the weeks to come here. And we'll be taking the information from the in-person events as well as the online survey. We're gonna then go to our advisory committee, as I mentioned, the planning commission. If you all wanna have regular dialogue with us, we're here for you, those kind of things. This is where we're just trying to get the communication going in two directions to make sure that we can hit the target. So then again, what I'd like to do is give you a description of the scenarios through my eyes. Like what was I trying to achieve with each of these so you, you understand kind of what the motive was? And then if you wanna provide any feedback, that's great, whether it's now or in the future, but we'd love to just have your insights as well as we go through. So you see the way this slide is set up? Scenario A is kind of, we call it, um, cruise control or, or just keeping things as they're going, just let it go. And then there were two alternatives that came out through our planning process. One was to kind of move things back in towards the center and take good use of infrastructure and spend money wisely and don't extend things until you need to, those kind of things. And then scenario C was more of a lead with conservation. So as long as we're going to develop, let's first identify those areas that are the most important from a conservation perspective to create an identity in some ways for parts of Richland County and then develop in the areas in between and take advantage of that. So if you go to the next slide. And the way these were created, uh, again, with those early meetings that started in December, we were generating ideas and themes and goals and we got those organized and the advisory committee has commented on those. And that's what really drove the different scenarios that we have. But as you could imagine, even if you have a value statement, there might be, um, the commitment to that value might be aggressive or conservative or, uh, there might be two options in order to address that value. That's what the scenarios were for, were to test some of those ideas about how we might do this. How would you operationalize some of these values? And that's what we did. Thanks. And again, I just wanna give, uh, credit because what, we ran this through the advisory committee. You can see on the right-hand side just some of the work products that they had created, but their finger, fingerprints are directly on this process and the committee that you created. So thank you. Thanks. And then again, just so that, um, you know, some people get uneasy when we bring the scenarios out. It's because we're purposely trying to do extremes. We're not trying to just do shades of gray because there, you can't learn enough from it. So we purposely tried to push some of these issues in extreme ways in order to get measurable results and evaluate trade-offs. So whether environmental stewardship or using infrastructure, whether you're urban or suburban or rural, um, or whether you develop closer to the, uh, towns and cities or further away, those kind of things. We really kind of pushed it a little bit so that we could give you measurable and identifiable trade-offs. Thanks. So first, just to kind of organize our brains before I present everything to you, I wanted to an- answer two quick questions. One is how are the scenarios the same? So every scenario, no matter which one I show you, we were basically playing in unincorporated Richland County. We did not play with either the military bases nor the cities or the towns. We were worried about unincorporated areas for which the comprehensive plan's gonna have influence on. Um, the anticipated growth, so the number of new dwelling units and the number of new non-residential square footage that was forecasted for this area, for the unincorporated area, we kept that the same. So there's no tricks of like we had more growth or less growth, therefore the demand went up or down. The demand was always the same and it's how we organized that demand or met that demand in the different scenarios. Also, the existing development patterns that are on the ground today. Um, you can't have just revisionist history if you liked or didn't like something. And so we have to acknowledge those things are there. And so they are there in all three of our scenarios that we have. Uh, and then the available ways we describe growth, we kept the same language for all three scenarios and how we described the growth. Excellent. And this just shows an example where, um, literally I had a pen in the computer and I was tracing with an aerial all the places that already have existing neighborhoods or shopping centers or complexes, industrial. And so these areas that you see that have a color on them on the slide, those are the same for all three scenarios. Basically, what we did was we sketched in the areas that are in white, the missing pieces in white, different futures for you. But the things you see here were always the same. Thanks. And so then how do we make them different? We did, we made them different by varying the development types. So whether it was a certain type of housing or a certain, certain type of employment, the pattern, so where we laid them out within the unincorporated county, um, their intensity. So sometimes we went more urban. Um, so you can imagine when you go to a smaller footprint, things have to go up in order to have the same amount of growth. When you push them out, they can become, um, more smooth, but they spread out further. So those things all changed and then how the infrastructure was created, uh, to support that development was allowed to be different for the scenario. All right, so just to run through them quickly, again, scenario A is, again, I've called it the cruise control. It's basically taking the plan from two thousand fifteen and letting it continue on. Um, and so when you do that, you see this has the most yellow within the map and the yellow are suburban neighborhoods. Um, and so just kind of file that away as we go through here. But if you go to the next slide, I've got the, more of the key features that are highlighted. So, uh, key features for scenario A, there's a variety of housing types as well as commercial and employment and they're scattered throughout the county. So everybody is kind of seeing some level of growth. As part of that, though, we are really focused on the interstate corridors. So seventy-seven, twenty, twenty-six and what opportunities they might provide to create more jobs, um, especially industrial jobs. Uh, in terms of the rural lifestyle, you saw again some of that yellow marching down, especially like in the lower Richland and the like. It's because a lot of those farms and things like you see in the last bullet are being converted over to neighborhoods in this scenario. So really, we only saved a farm in this case if it was only over five hundred acres in size. Now, it could be contiguous parcels, but they were large areas of agriculture. Otherwise, we assumed, as happens a lot of times when farms change generations, maybe that next generation doesn't wanna farm anymore and so it becomes a neighborhood or something else. So we assume that, that was widespread in this scenario, that phenomenon. Thanks. Then the other way to look at, at sort of how you organize, uh, future growth is kind of where are the intended growth areas, the potential growth areas? And so for scenario A, what we did was basically if it was vacant land anywhere in, in the county, if it was agriculture, anything less than five hundred acres in size or if it were what was called underdeveloped, meaning a space ratio, like let's say you have a mobile home, but it's on thirty acres of land. That could develop in the future, uh, under scenario A. Uh, so the only things that were left off that you see in brown on the map would be existing developed areas, parklands, permanent open space, water bodies. And then for all the scenarios, remember, we did not touch the cities, towns, or the military land holdings as well. So basically, anywhere you see in white on this map, growth could fall under the current comprehensive plan, the way it's written. Now, how intense it is and those kind of things is a further dis- description. But anywhere in white was a potential area to grow for this scenario. Excellent. And so when we did our computer modeling and you looked at, um, where people wanted to live and the fact that people are kind of moving further out in certain places, um, you could imagine that the dots on the map represent on the left, a new home that would land anywhere in an unincorporated county. And on the right, the dots represent where new, uh, square footage for buildings, industrial office or retail might land. And as you could see, it's, it's definitely a dispersed pattern of growth and it's in all directions. So as you can imagine for scenario A, if this is the growth pattern, you're also gonna be chasing it with water pipes and sewer pipes and schools and roads. So this is actually, has the biggest expansion of infrastructure needed, not really because of the demand in terms of, of intensity, but the, the location of it. You have to extend the infrastructure in order to serve the people in these more extreme areas. If you go to the next slide, please. So kind of file that in your head as sort of the compare-two scenario, but that's sort of a, a more spread-out dispersed development pattern. Scenario B took a different approach and there were members of the community who said, why don't we reflect back in to the places where infrastructure exists? Or the, those places that were skipped over and there might be like one large parcel surrounded by development. Why don't we fill in that parcel before we go further, further out? So that's what scenario B was about. And so if you'll notice, and again, I just use lower Richland as the easiest place to find it, but you can see some of that yellow turned back to green. Um, and so what we ended up doing was we ran what was called a suitability analysis. That's part of the three-day discussion, so we can get into that later. But basically, we looked at why are some areas of the county more attractive to grow than others? And it's because they have access to transportation, they have, um, zoning in place, they have water and sewer access. You know, the things that, that a developer might look for. Those areas tended to be north of the I twenty, seventy-seven corridor, sort of north, like Columbia and, and Fort Jackson up is where those, those areas tended to be. And so growth wanted to go there, so that's what we tried to, to do was, was take advantage of what was already there. So if you go to the next slide, please. So when you do that, sort of from the features, you can see, well, we reflected growth back in up to a lot of your economic centers. So you can see places like Columbia, Blythewood, um, where the scout plant is going in on seventy-seven. If you're putting in tremendous amount of money there, what do you do around it? What other secondary uses feed off of that? What other economies of scale are needed in order to take advantage of the dollar you've already spent, kind of a thing? Um, and then as part of that, we also would have densities or intensities or mixes of land uses to get up to the level that you might be able to use something other than your automobile. So where transit might become feasible and cost feasible, um, or walking between two different places is feasible versus having to drive everywhere and those kind of things. This scenario does that. Um, in terms of the industrial, you see again the interstate corridors, but this is more for industrial only because of the truck traffic and, or, uh, around rail. Um, reinforcement of municipal growth. So in the cities and towns, they all have comprehensive plans as well that are calling for growth. And so what do you do at the edges? And this might talk about how you work more together to get those, either reinforce growth inside the cities or towns or what's going on at the edges versus expanding way out miles and miles and miles. Um, and then you see the infill and redevelopment. And there are specific corridors that were brought up through the community exercises of places that might wanna see a little more investment and a little more strengthening. And so those corridors were called out. We can add to that list, but again, for scenario planning, this is what we had heard and so we're moving those forward is the idea. So again, when you look at the areas that could potentially grow under this alternative scenario, you can see everything really pushes into itself. So there's a lot less white on the map and a lot more brown on the map for here. Again, remember, white is where the growth would, would go. Um, and the reason for it is because we are rewarding those areas that are highly suitable to develop. So you see sort of, again, the twenty, seventy-seven, kind of twenty-six corridor. And then you see some stuff going on just south of where Columbia city limits stop now, as well as some of the recommendations in the lower Richland tourism study are in there as well. And so that's really what's driving this, is being compact and, uh, making good use of your resources. Excellent. So again, if you go to the, the results of the computer, you can see a much tighter development form and, and development pattern. This would make use of the existing excess capacity you have in your different infrastructure systems today. Or it's much easier to upsize a pipe in a location now than to require the right-of-way and the land to extend it. So in a lot of ways, even when you have to upsize infrastructure here, there are cost efficiencies by doing it that way versus extending outward. Next slide. And then the third scenario again was where we led with conservation. Um, so we called it rich land. And as part of that, instead of saying where do we wanna develop first and then conserve afterwards, we conserved first. And we said, you know what? When you look at things like the flooding phenomenon you had and those things, mother nature's undefeated, right? And so let's look at where floodplains are, let's look at where wetlands are, let's like, let's look at critical areas that flood and the like and then we'll develop around those areas instead of trying to engineer our way out of it. And so we did a lot of that here. If you go to the next slide, we can show, um, this one was the most aggressive in protecting or expanding open space that we had here. It also looked at low-impact development principles. So even when we develop places, how did we make sure if people are giving up private open space, meaning in their front yards or backyards or things, how do you make sure there's a public park nearby, that they're getting in exchange for that change in density and those kind of things? Uh, in terms of agriculture, it was the most aggressive in preserving agriculture. So anything, um, that was over a hundred acres was saved in this scenario, so that the opposite of scenario A in the extremes. Um, and we clustered that development again to take, take advantage of infrastructure and the resiliency. Again, looking at like flood-prone areas and those kind of things as places to not develop it as we went through. Excellent. So this one ends up in between. Scenario A had the most widespread canvas you could, you could play in. Scenario B was the tightest, the smallest. Scenario C is in between and you could, it was very organic shapes to it because we're following things like stream buffers or wetlands or those kind of things. And so it becomes much more organic, um, in terms of the development pattern that you would see here. Thanks. And so because of that, you do see some more dots spread out, but if you were to overlay those dots on the maps I had shown you earlier, you see there's a lot of green in between them. Um, and so there's a green connected network, so to speak, and the development is in between it. Thanks. All right, so maybe just, you might just be like some of the people who came to the meetings and they were said, you know, this is all great, but how do I keep track? I was at this end of the room and then I'm at this other. So we had a side-by-side comparison section as well. So this is really where I'm just gonna tell you about the trade-offs of what you're getting or losing from scenario to scenario. So on scenario C, uh, you are increasing the amount of green space that you would preserve by fifty percent. Okay, so we made an effort, again, we're going in extremes. We tried to get at least fifty percent greater green space that would be permanently protected in C. Also in C is the one where we protected the most agriculture land, almost three times more than A, if you look at that. And so again, we're trying to judge what people's appetite is to, uh, support farming and agriculture in the community. Those, those areas become more green in C at the expense of the yellow. So you have the least amount of yellow as well and it's because those residential neighborhoods are now being repackaged as something more dense. as something more dense, less land area to take up or becoming green space. But it's not suburban development anymore. In terms of activity centers, so activity centers or job centers or retail centers and the like, it's kind of a push all the way across. So we're able to keep that relatively stable as well as employment. And I'll make a note when you go through all the scenarios, the blue and the brown, the light, the light tan, the military and the cities and towns, so the same for all, as I mentioned. So there's no change in those as you go through the scenarios. So then again, in terms of potential growth areas, and this is important because these might be some of the rules that you want us to really emphasize within the comprehensive plan to set the tone or to show sort of, you know, where does, where does the compass point for what, what and how you want to grow? And these are the big value statements. So again, scenario A is more about if it's undeveloped, it has a right to develop, let it, let it happen, and the infrastructure will, will chase it, just to be frank. Scenario B is about saying, we have certain areas, we want to focus our infrastructure and our dollars, so let's put them there. And we would advocate and prioritize those areas to develop first. Doesn't say the others don't develop, it just says we prioritize developing first in the areas where infrastructure exists. Scenario C says, we need to look at strengthening our regulations on development in and around flood plains, wetlands. The other part I didn't mention, if you, it's hard to to tell on C, but in the lower Richland County area, you have almost like two areas of white, and then there's a brown kind of like trail that runs through it. We also took what's called the military mission footprint. So we looked at the areas that Fort Jackson or McIntyre need for when their planes leave the base or for the blast zones that they had, the things that they need to be a high quality, full functioning military base. Some of that stuff goes outside the fence line. So scenario C does that as well. It protects those areas they identified as important to them and their mission. So again, just these are the ideas you can put forth in your plan to kind of direct where growth goes. And then where does the growth actually go? So again, scenario A had the most spread out. It, it tended to be the most low density and most spread out form of growth that you could have. Scenario B tried to bring it back in. And again, very close to where municipal services are, the infrastructure you provide. Scenario C was sort of in between because there were areas you could develop in between the green conservation and open space. And so we let the model do that, but that's kind of the the in between spot again for residential. Now, for non residential, it's, it's a little harder to describe because there's less dots, right? So there are some dots going in many different places, but the concentration of the dots are sort of the important. On scenario A and C, you see that lower Richland has the most dispersion of centers. And scenario B is the tightest. And again, it's, it was looking at extending infrastructure and those kinds of things. On scenario C, you also see that there's some more growth sort of towards the Irma area compared to B. Again, B was very compact, so it wanted to stay in that 77 corridor, the 20 corridor, and then in around Columbia and the like. So again, B would be your tightest footprint when it came to non residential growth. So we actually kind of run it through the report card and get the numbers out of this. Again, in terms of the amount of growth, you can see that through the projections and the like, I mean, you're over 70,000 people in every scenario. There's a lot of people interested here. You're in a good market. You know this because you have the applications coming across your, your podium, but you know what's going on. In terms of employment, they're all equal because we assume the same employment. The reason the population changes a little bit, just so you know, is based on what housing type we did, there's certain housing sizes that go with that. Multifamily have less people living in them, single family detached have more people living in, more bedrooms, those kinds of things. And then you can see the mix of things are changing. So whether you want folks to prioritize living in a, a single home on a single lot, or whether you want to give them more variety, we played that through the scenarios. You see scenario A has a tremendous amount more of impervious surface. So if you're worried about flooding, scenario A is really adding to the amount of area where water is going to bounce off and runoff. So more flooding potential. In terms of agriculture preservation, C was the clear winner. In terms of the amount of land disturbed, you can see at 14% at the bottom left significantly more than B or C. If you kind of, again, cruise control and kind of let that go. And then rounding out the indicators here, you can see, well, you know, what are the demands of, of the services you provide? And when the departments come to you and ask for more funding because of the way that you've grown? So the first row that you see up there would be the number of sheriff deputies that you may need in, in order to support expanding infrastructure and expanding service areas. The number of new firefighters that you might need, the amount of park space that you might want to go with in order to keep and catch up with rising populations. It's interesting, you see where it says 63%. That's the amount, the increase in the service area of your water and sewer, which is expensive, especially the sewer. You can see how much more, 82% for scenario A versus 63%. Those are real dollars as you're starting to program where they go. In terms of the amount of jobs and things we could bring and the amount of land we could offer for employment, again, scenario B tended to be the winner. And I really enjoyed the last row that you see there because it had come up in our meetings about like the cultural significance of the county and the historic significance. So we're able to, to working with some of the other projects you, you have going on right now, get some data and actually look at how much development would encroach on where you have culturally significant areas or historically significant areas. And you can see depending on the scenario, we either protected them more or protected them less. So just to kind of kick off feedback, and again, thoughts or comments you have, as well as we'll be with the advisory committee, the planning commission, we're really just trying to, to have all this stuff come at us right now. But in terms of feedback we got through the community engagement series, one was the overall planning process and the events were pretty well received. We got some good comments that we had. It was very accessible. For those who really wanted to see what was happening and that this wasn't, you know, consultant magic, we really did provide everything they wanted. For those who wanted a more high level, the side by sides were really good for them to look at. In terms of infrastructure, you know this, but congestion is, is like the number one thing that everybody talks about, you can agree on. So you have that going, but other things like how do you provide water, sewer and the like comes up. Water bodies in terms of quality was important and the flooding event, people remember that. And they want to make sure that doesn't happen again to the best of your abilities to do that. Open space preservation was also very important to some people who came through, so conserving rural lands, agriculture, or natural areas. The idea about quality of life also came through in terms of what types of places we offered to live, to recreate, to work. The rural lifestyle, again, especially more in lower Richland, when those events were held there, that was a very strong opinion that we heard. The idea about at least giving the opportunity for farms to succeed, obviously, they've got to make some of those decisions on their own, but to give them the opportunities to succeed was important. And it was interesting that some people started to say, well, I can't have all of this if I don't go higher density in some places to save that land. So there were some people that are already starting to rationalize, well, maybe I need to let a little density go in some place in order to get something more permanently preserved in the other. So that stuff was going on as well. And I'll tell you now, again, because the survey hasn't closed, but right now, through the events that we had and, and some of the things we're getting, scenario B seems to be resonating with people. And then it's B with a mix of this or a mix of that. You know, everyone has a qualifier that goes through it. But scenario B is, is getting some support as we go through the process, just as kind of the starting point, because we have to start with one of them. But again, I'd love to hear what you have to say in the next week as well, to see where that ends up pointing. The next slide? So where do we go from here? So for number one, and again, next Thursday, we'll be meeting and working with staff in a work session type environment. We're just going to take everything we heard and just try to make sense of it all and categorize it and, and put it in themes. We'll have that work session again on Thursday. As many fingerprints as we can get on it, we will create what we call the preferred scenario, which is really just the future land use map you'll see in the first draft. And so again, that'll have colors on the map that show intended growth and development, patterns, intensities, types, those kinds of things. And then we also are creating something called sub area concepts. It's part of our contract. Think of it as like a proof of concept. And what I mean by that is, is I could probably get all of you in some form to say, I like mixed use, right? It's so nebulous, we haven't defined it yet. The sub area concepts test that idea. And they say, well, I didn't mean mixed use with 20 story buildings, or I didn't mean mixed use where it was all blank or it was all Y. So the sub area concepts are going to allow us to drill down and really kind of test some of these big ideas and these general statements, as well as, is provide some guidance to very specific areas within the county. So those will be developed in the, in the weeks and months to come. And then we begin phase three, because we, we are targeting an adoption in December and it's closer than you think, right? So as part of that, in, in, in phase three, I just remind you that we'll be looking at, you know, different recommendations. Those recommendations will be in text, they'll be in maps, they'll be in examples, different implementation strategies. And then we'll go out to the public again for what we'll call public forum number three. And it's kind of the adage of did we get it right? And we'll get feedback on that and share that with you.
Great job. Yes ma'am, recognize.
I do have a question, and I hope it makes sense. Is there a scenario that is more conducive to creating affordable opportunities for smaller developers as opposed to larger scale units? So I'm looking at, say, for instance, scenario B, which brings everything to the center. But would that require more apartment complexes with larger units as opposed to maybe town homes where a small, smaller developer focused on affordable housing could actually build? I hope that makes sense.
No, it makes, it makes perfect sense. And I'm not going to, I'm not trying to be squishy on you, but my direct answer to you is to be determined. And what I mean by that is, just to give you some context, you could have some large mixed use or apart, like whatever form they take to get density. But there's this whole concept of either missing middle housing or some communities we worked in, they'll say, you know what, every single family home, let them put an accessory dwelling unit in the back. And so what that ends up being is, it usually ends up being a family member more than anything, but it's where another person can share that lot. So there are all different ways that we can increase density, and it isn't always having to get to a large number. It's just being more efficient in every area. So again, accessory dwelling unit doubles the density. You know, from a percentage standpoint, that's, that's a big deal, but it's not an apartment complex. So we'll still have to work out how, but if the direction is to find ways to be more efficient, we'll have to bring those forward for consideration.
That's one Baron, that's one Newton.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. I have two, two, a couple of questions. And, and I know that you mentioned that only, really, you emphasized the flood, the flood plain only in one of the scenarios, and that was scenario C. I, and this is probably not a question, but maybe a statement. It would be helpful to, you know, for all of the scenarios to take into consideration flooding because it is an ongoing problem, not just in lower Richland, but even in Northeast and, and in other places. And as we look at development, I would like for us to take that under, you know, under consideration when you all are, you know, around the table having more conversation and to look at how we can address the flood plains in all scenarios, because that is going to be a challenge. And I know that in scenario A, it's lots of growth, which usually equates to more flooding and such. But I just think, I think there may be some way that we can address it in all areas to some degree. And so that was just my, my first statement. And then another one as a question, you mentioned, I think it was in scenario A about the agricultural land, and it's, it's, it appears, and this is what I heard, so help me process it. 500 acres or less is not necessarily protected with this scenario. But if it's 500 acres or greater, it is, it is protected. So essentially, you know, I know in my district, we don't have a whole lot of 500 acres of land, but it does seem a little bit, it, as if it's inconsiderate for those farmers that are, you know, have 75 acres or 100 acres. How, how do we get around addressing those types of agricultural spaces? Because those are the ones that are realistic. Those are realistic spaces, and as they are realistic, then those are also the ones that are at detriment by any of our scenarios, and I, and I don't want to see that happen to them.
Well, one, it's a good, it's a good point, and, and I just go back. We were pushing extremes on purpose, and we knew that if we only save 500 acres, it would get people's attention, because that means a lot of farms are lost. So, you know, obviously, as we mentioned, we get feedback and we pull things back in or whatever. I, I really think if, if the direction we get is to make farmland protection and even encourage farmland as an important tenant, then the next thing to do is to look at the how. And sometimes it's, it's encroachment. Sometimes it's, you know, mitigating the nuisance that other people are complaining about. Sometimes it's just getting in and really understanding exactly what type of agriculture you have. And I'll give you an example, like up in Maryland, we did a project, and they have like beekeepers and things of that nature. And they're like, we have a really small footprint, but what we really need is somewhere, like where do we sell our stuff? Or where do we, you know, so like, some of it's not just the farm itself, but they don't survive because of the ecosystem they need. They need to be able to sell their crops or animals, whatever it is, in a timely manner and in a convenient distance and things. So if, if the direction we get is that preserving agriculture is very important, we need to look at it as a strategy, not just a, a blob on the map kind of a thing to figure it out.
And so I just wanted to say, you know, I think that's important. I do think that's important because even though Richland County is growing really fast, there are still, you know, those farm areas and those farmers that have helped the success of Richland County, you know, it's our name, rich land, you know? So I'll, I'll get off that in one last thing, Madam Chair. And that is, you talked about the infrastructure several times, and it, it appears that as we look at infrastructure, because that's always the question when we have rezoning, you know, what about the infrastructure, what about the infrastructure? Well, traditionally, we don't put in infrastructure first, but we put it in after the fact or, you know, kind of as we go kind of thing. How are either one of the, in any, either one of these scenarios, are you all going to address how we look at infrastructure moving forward? Is that being addressed as a part of it? I know, I think, I don't remember which plan it was, but there was, it might have been A because of all the growth. It was, it was hit hard there, but in all of the plans, there are growth. So with that, are you all planning to address the infrastructure needs that match the scenario?
Yeah. So the straight answer is yes, and I'll, I'll give you a couple of levels of how. So one is, we do need to operate in the realities of who provides it and how they provide it. So, you know, we, we can't have our head in the sand. We need to acknowledge that certain, certain people, it's a partnership, certain people you're leading, that kind of thing. So we'll, we'll do that in our recommendations. There's a couple other phenomenon to think about as we go through this. One is acknowledging in the plan that when you cut the ribbon on a new road or you cut the ribbon on a new park, that's when you got it for free. But now that you have it, you have to operate it, you got to maintain it, and you have to replace or rehabilitate everything years down the road, and that's on your dime to do that. So what is the true cost of infrastructure is something that we've hit in our plans as well, that it might be interesting to look at. So yeah, we'll, we'll have some recommendations as, as we go through. Some of them will be for what the county needs to do, some of them will be for what your partners need to do. The last point I'll make on it, you know, I, I love when in state law they put in the priority investment element, right? The requirement. I actually, was it 27? I, I wrote the one for here in 27, I think it was, or 2007, sorry. Yeah, I, I, future ahead, future ahead, no, in, in 2007. But it was fresh then, and now it's kind of refined itself. So this might be an opportunity to take and be more prescriptive with your priority investment zones that are required to be shown on your map. And then whether you love it or hate it, I have to run the numbers for that element. I have to say what your costs might be and what your funding streams are, so we can have that infrastructure question. The, the scary part, as you know, is those numbers get really big really fast, though, so they can get really scary. But they are what they are.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Newton?
Thank you, and I know we
Thank you, and I know we have another committee meeting, so I'll try to be brief. And Ms. Barron touched on a few things. So just first, acknowledging what you said before, so I can have it sit right with me. These again are extreme scenarios so that our real preferences bubble to the surface and you're going to create some magic that blends the best of what people want together.
We will create the magic, yes.
Yeah, that's what I, y'all will create the magic. As it relates to agriculture, I just want to confirm, I heard you talking about preserving 500 acres or more. Whatever the number is, to be clear, are you basing that just on acreage or are you actually looking at usage? So for example, if I have a thousand acres of nothing that is not actually farming, are you counting that as a farm? And if I have 75 acres of, I honest to goodness, I'm running a farm here, are you counting that as a farm or ignoring it because it doesn't meet the acreage requirement?
So at this first pass, we used acreage. We used 500, 300, 100 as our cutoff points. Again, just to, to do a scenario. As you get into it, we do need to, to put the meat on the bones. I will tell you what's really interesting here and it's not unique to all of South Carolina, but even defining and identifying all your farms is not as easy as you think. Because a lot of times it's, it's not really a farm, it's a tax decision. You know what I mean? So like to really find those farms, sometimes I might say, look, all of you have your constituents who you know are real farmers. Give us their names and where they are so that we can connect with those people. Because honestly, the database is not just like snapping your fingers and getting it.
Sure. And so I, I, I'm very interested in that because even in our land development code, we've made some decisions based on acreage because there had to be some sort of criteria. And then it creates some really weird scenarios as you're looking at things. So I'll just note two things that I would love to see as you do this. One of them, you already addressed, we talked about protecting agriculture. I'm very curious to know how that is done. You know, is it zoning? Is it looking at the surrounding area? So you mentioned that, I would love to see it. And also as it looks at conservation, which is a really big word, I hope that in our final plan, and I would love to see, for lack of a better term, like to your criteria. I mean, there's conserve, which is a big word, but what are the priorities in there that we're looking at? Because nobody wants to disrespect the environment, no matter how urban the area is. So I'll just be really interested in seeing that as you move forward and how we're defining what infrastructure is because it's a word that everybody uses. And sometimes we mean different things. Sometimes I mean that I want a road that has, some constituents might say, I want a road that has no congestion. And some people may just say, I want access to sewer. And so those are different things that are important for the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would, and this may be you or Director Williams, I'm not sure, just kind of wrap us up and discuss next steps.
Just to change voice, you want to do?
Sure. So again, next steps, we'll be having a work session with staff to kind of review all of this information. Chew it on, chew on a little bit, take all this feedback back in. We'll also be setting up meetings with the planning commission and the advisory committee to do the same thing with them. So over the next several months, we'll be kind of going through this information before we get ready for the third round of public forums in the fall.
Is somebody online?
It's me, it's me.
Who, who is me? Is that Ms. English?
Yes.
Hey me.
How are you all doing? Hey, Madam Chair. I'm good. I just have a, and I want to thank Councilwoman Barron for kind of touching on this. But when we talk about the infrastructure, one of the biggest things that concerns me, especially in my area, is that I would hate to see that another hardscrabble or Clemson Road scenario. And I can use Sumter Highway as an example. It was built in, I think, 1951 or 1957. And it's just now reaching its capacity. So I would like to see us have some forethought, especially in that Lower Richland area when we are, because just put it down and let the infrastructure follow, huh, doesn't work. I haven't seen it work because of the congestion. And this will kind of eliminate some of that stress or that overbearing of traffic. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. English. All right, well, we are at item number four. Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion is taken for adjournment. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa? Weaver?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Maki?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.